The first item on our agenda is the 27, 2018 budget hearing and approval. And so at this time, I will open the budget hearing for comment. And Julie is shaking her head that we have no commenters. I'm going to hold it open for like a minute in case we have any latecomers. We're a couple of minutes late in starting anyway. And then, uh, then we'll move forward. All right. Since we have no comments for our hearing, I'm going to close the budget hearing and we'll move on to our approval of, I guess we need to do our approval of our agenda.
I'll move that we approve the agenda.
All right.
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All right. So then our new business item will be approval of the 2017, 2018 budget with Kathy Johnson, Executive Director of Finance.
Um, we need to make sure we approve the budget as part of what you just did up above in the.
Oh, okay.
Oh, yeah.
Thought we needed to do that on the regular agenda as part of the budget hearing. Okay.
Well, it's on the regular agenda, but you don't have it listed down below.
Gotcha. Okay. So we're going to actually do the approval of, as part of the budget hearing. So we'll leave it open. And then are you doing a presentation?
Yep.
All right. You need to tell us which order this is going to happen in then.
The approval should have been down in the actual agenda with the resolution and the other two items that.
Okay.
So it was bundled together. So I don't know if you need to change the agenda to have it as part of the regular meeting.
Oh, okay. I see what you're saying.
Hearing.
Okay.
Regular meeting approval.
All right.
Except we amend the agenda.
Nope.
You can't.
You can talk about and vote on it in a different.
Okay. Right. Yeah. All right. We're going to give David a minute to take a look at this.
Hearing section and it needs to be down with the reports and approval or the approvals up there. So they had called the order of the meeting.
Well, but I called.
Sort of out of. I don't know how to.
So I did it in the right order though, David. I called the budget hearing to order and then I adjourned the budget hearing.
Okay. Without taking action on.
Without taking action on the budget.
Okay. So I would reopen your budget hearing.
Okay.
Take action on the budget hearing, close it again, and then move forward with the balance of your agenda. And that way you've not modified the agenda.
But the hearing is not part of the meeting.
Oh, it's not?
No. Meeting comes after.
I know. Just what you really talked about.
The special meeting, budget hearing, when you close the budget. Open the meeting. The agenda and the budget's approved in the meeting.
Okay. So you've already, you've closed the hearing, you've opened your meeting, so now just vote on the budget.
Okay. All right. So we're in the right place then. Okay. So with that, I will introduce Kathy Johnson, our Executive Director of Finance, for our discussion of approval of the 2017, 2018 budget.
So basically, it's what your enclosure is and the presentation for all the details behind what you're approving tonight was done at the last board meeting. And so basically, if there are no changes, as we talked about, things could go down, but you can't go up. And so this is what was published. And basically, if this is how you want to go ahead and settle the budget, we would just move to approve the 1718 budget based on the maximums and mill levies reflected in this code 99 document. And then we'll finish up all the detail stuff and get that distributed to the county and things posted to the website by those meetings.
Okay. All right. So board discussion or a motion if there's no board discussion. I think I have a comment to make, but I want to give everybody else an opportunity if anybody wants to chime in. Okay. I just wanted to say that I think that, you know, there was a little bit of discussion in the media and online, I understand, about the mill levy and where we're setting the mill levy. And I just, I think it's really important to reemphasize for the public that, you know, the actions that we're taking with our budget this year are planned and designed in a way both to take advantage of all the state funding that is available to us this year, which is really, really important, given the number of years that we've gone without an increase in state aid for our district. It's really important to some of our goals around, you know, being able to give our teachers a raise and being able to add back positions that we have cut over the last many years. We can't do all those things unless we take advantage of the state funding and local option budget authority that's available to us. At the same time, we were very clear in all of our presentations leading up to passage of our bond issue, that when we were talking about the increase in the mill levy, we were speaking about the increase in the mill levy as it relates to the bond and interest fund. And I know I was very explicit. I know that the other people who gave those presentations were very clear about that. And so, you know, we are holding to that promise to the community and we're planning out that funding in a way that allows us to keep a fairly steady mill levy and that we do that with the assistance of, with our Director of Finance and our counsel, for our bond counsel. And it's good practice to do that, to try to be responsible in planning in that way. So I personally am very comfortable in approving this budget. I'm glad that we have the opportunity to take advantage of some additional funds for our district. It's sorely needed. And with that, I will open the floor for either further commentary or a motion.
Thank you for that, Shannon. I will move that the Board of Education approve the 2017, 2018 budget and mill levy for USD 497 as noted on the State of Kansas budget form 90, form, I'm sorry, Kansas Budget Code 99 form.
There's a second?
Second.
All right.
Jessica and Beeson, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Yes. Harmon?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Kimball?
Yes.
Sandburn?
Yes.
Motion passes six zero.
Thank you. Okay. So we are going to move on to our reports for this evening and approvals, the first being resolution for sale of said 2017 bonds with Kathy Johnson, Executive Director of Finance.
So this is the next step in the approval from our May 2nd bond election. And the resolution tonight that's in front of you is to give permission for us to go ahead and do the first offering of the bond issue, as we talked about in the budget, based on the timeline of the projects and the need of funding and when we need it, and then also knowing for IRS arbitrage of the different things that we need to spend it down in certain periods of time. Selling only half at this time is what made the most sense. So that is what this is asking permission to do is sell 43,500,000 of the 2017 bonds. And so once we do that, and we did this in the 13 bond issue, if you remember, we sold it in three increments because that project timeline crossed quite a bit of time. And so in a similar fashion, we're looking to sell these in probably two segments. And so that's what the resolution is asking us to do. And we would come back to you then with the September 11th board meeting with the results of the sale and funds by the end of September in order to then start working through the new project. Unless there's more information that you need.
Questions for Kathy? No? Okay. How about a motion?
I'll make the motion. I move the Board of Education adopt the resolution 2017, oh eight twenty-two authorizing the offering for sale of general obligation bonds, series 2017-a of United School District Number 497, Douglas County, Kansas, Lawrence.
Second.
Fincher?
Yes.
Harmon?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Kimball?
Yes.
Sandburn?
Yes. Yes.
Yes. Motion passes six zero.
Thank you. Okay. The next item on the agenda, Administrator in Classified Salary with David Cunningham, Executive Director of Human Resources and Chief Legal Counsel, and Kathy Johnson.
Okay. Good evening. So we have actually some good news this evening. The, I talked with Anna earlier today and we were in the process of scheduling our mediation with our LEA counterparts on the negotiations team. And they submitted a request or another proposal, if you will, that asked for some modifications in some language. And I consulted through Anna with Jessica and Vanessa. They were in agreement that the changes were acceptable. So I can report this evening and I've so notified their chief negotiator that we have a tentative agreement with our teachers. So as we move forward to talk about our administrative and classified compensation, then I can work with the superintendent and the board president to schedule time for you to review the tentative agreement and ratify according to the recommendation of your team. So good news this evening.
Great.
Also, in relation to administrative and classified compensation, we have a board enclosure that we had provided to you. I would note, we made one mistake. The increase in 403B for administrators is going from 75 to $80. It was, the current rate is 75 and we had typed in 70. So it's only a $5 increase, equivalent to the same that we're doing for classified, 55 to 60, it's 75 to 80. So essentially, the pools of money that we are recommending to you would be equivalent to the pool of money that we agreed with the teacher group in terms of overall compensation. And so our recommendation would be that the board approve a total of 362,324 dollars for administrators and 1,279,661 dollars for classified staff. The board approved in July, in its July 3 meeting, some money to begin implementation of the classification study that was done previously. And by using that allocation and this allocation, we're going to be able to really move our classified folks. We're anticipating within one to three percent of market, if not at market. So it's a very positive outcome that the board has focused on over the last couple of years in authorizing the study in the first place and then funding the implementation of the study. There was a study done many years ago and it came about the same time that there were some financial challenges. And so that study was phased and all the subsequent phases, the initial phase was done, but then the subsequent phases were never actually put in place. So classified will enjoy a study and then a resulting implementation based on your action that is going to be very favorable to them. So the specifics are broken down, medical dental vision, early retirement, 403, employer costs are allocated in the board enclosure. If there are any questions, I can get into those or Kathy can get into specifics on some of that as well. Our recommendation would be to approve those tools for implementation.
Okay. Other questions for David or Kathy?
I have a question just about the classified staff. So will every staff member receive a 6% raise in addition to kind of the implementation of that pool of money? Or is the entire pool, the pool that we authorized at the previous meeting and then this additional pool, going to go into helping that study go further? Does that make sense?
Makes sense. And it's an important question and frankly, it relates to all three employee groups.
Right.
Employees will not all get a 6% raise.
Right.
Whether you're talking about the certified or teacher group, there are people that are frozen on the salary schedule, so they will get the base increase. And if memory serves me, that's somewhere around a 3.6% increase. You have other folks who have put time into further education and they're eligible to move both down and across the schedule. Their percentages would be, in some cases, larger than 6%. But the board has approved a total pool of money compared to last year of 6%. The same for the other employee groups. They won't all get 6% raises either. So as we look at the market study on the classified side, you will see some people get lower percentage increases and some will get more than 6%, depending upon how far they need to move in order to get towards market.
Okay.
So it will be a very differential treatment across the board simply because we have a range of deviation from market from 11% over to 64% below. So obviously, those that are over are not going to get very much. Those that are under are going to get more.
So for that classified group, it'll just move us further along in a faster capacity to being where we'd like to be in terms of the recommendations from this.
The initial allocation by the board lets us put everybody on the salary schedule. Now, for classified, we're going to actually be using a salary schedule now, one where each year we've built it so that we can move them across the schedule from column A to column Z. These columns do not relate to years of service. They're just columns. And so each year, based on historically the pools of money available, we think we can move everybody at least 1% every year. So the initial money gets us on the schedule. The additional money, this additional pool of 6%, will then let us hone that to get people into the schedule and much closer to or at market. So a combination of both of those things is really where we're seeing the traction.
Okay. And then how does that compare to the administrative group? Do we have any kind of schedule for that group?
We do not have a schedule for that group. Historically, I'd say historically, in the last several years, the fixed dollar amount that we've given to teachers is a fixed dollar amount given to each administrator. And then the balance of, if there was any left over in that pool, then Kathy would go back and recompute what does that look like in the context of a percentage increase? I don't know whether the superintendent's going to do it that way this time or not. We haven't had that conversation yet. So it is not an across-the-board percentage increase.
Okay. That's helpful.
Other questions? Okay. Entertained a motion then.
I move the Board of Education approve the administrate, sorry, got to see through the glare here, approve the administrator and classified staff compensation and fringe benefit packages for the 2017, 2018 school year in the amount of, all right, sorry. Hang on a second. I got it. 362,324 dollars for administrators and 1,279,661 for classified staff.
Second.
Harmon?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Kimball?
Yes.
Sandburn?
Yes.
Beeson?
Yes.
Fincher?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay. So that concludes the reports and approvals. We'll move on now to our board work session around interview prep for our superintendent search firm selection and introduce Brian Jordan from Kansas Association of School Boards.
And before he steps to the mic, Shannon asked me to put together a kind of a comparison chart. And so actually, Lois Groh in my office did that for us. We've tweaked a few things and I'm going to hand that out now.
Thank you, David. This is around the fee proposals in the, from the different firms.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
I understood that. I have also a recent.
Oh, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Rick needs a copy.
Okay. Nice.
As Ms. Kimball indicated, I'm Brian Jordan with the Kansas Association of School Boards. I visited with you all last spring as you were going through your interim search process. I'm here tonight as a service to the Lawrence Public Schools Board of Education as part of KSB services to talk a little bit about superintendent search firm selection. This is something that we help school boards with as they go through this process. In full disclosure, you all are fully aware, we do superintendent searches. We're not putting in to do a search for you this time. We felt it was in our best interest to be in this capacity and not trying to pursue your superintendent search. We're very closely involved with the interim selection process and felt like it was best to have fresh eyes and ears working with you as you go forward in this process. So tonight, what I've got for you is just a list of considerations and guidance that we commonly give boards as they go through the process of selecting a firm to help them with. It says executive search on here because we help districts and interlocals with sped directors and other leadership positions. But these are those things that what we've found in our work, not only in Kansas with boards, but also with other school board associations that have folks that do what we do, these are some common things that need to be thought about and discussed as a board as you make that important selection of who's going to help you hire your next superintendent. So really, there's just a list of 12 things here and my thought was, as I go through this, I want you to ask questions. I'll try to give you rationale why these are considerations that you should discuss. I know one of the key things that you need to work on later tonight is what are the questions that we're going to ask these different firms that come in that assure us that we're getting the right group to help us with this important decision that we're making? So one of the first pieces that, or one of the first considerations that you all as a Board of Education need to think about is who's in control of the search process? You really want the group to come in and design a process that meets your needs locally. And what we mean by meeting your needs locally is you should have a lot of say and input into what groups are providing characteristics or input into the types of things that they would like to see in the next superintendent. You should also have a lot of say and input into the timeline of the search process. Every district is a little bit different due to local factors of when they want the search to start, when they want that to wrap up. That's something that you should have a lot of say in. A lot of places will come in and give you best practices and give you guidance and that's what you want. And then design it around those best practices and guidance. The next consideration for you to think about is who is the firm ultimately working for? Are they working for us as a Board of Education or are they working for the candidates that they're trying to place? What I mean by that is you can do some research on these different groups that have applied to do your search and begin to see some patterns emerge. Do they have a consistent pool of people that seem to pop up in all of their most desirable searches? Or is the pool unique to the needs of that community and that district's desires? So that's something to consider when you look at these firms and ask questions about how do you develop your pool of candidates? Is it a group of people that you just kind of keep on speed dial to call when it's a good job that opens up? Or is it marketed and then you vet candidates and put people in the pool that are a good fit for this district? Another key piece is the support that you receive throughout the search process. They should obviously be easily accessible via cell phone, via email. We would encourage you to ask upfront, will we have the same consultant working with us throughout the entire search process? Sometimes there's a group that's the sales group and then there's a group that's the pitch group and there's a group that comes in and does the focus groups in the community. You want consistency through each of those steps because they're learning about your district, your needs, as they go through that process. And then when they're vetting candidates, they're going to have a better understanding of what you're really looking for as they do the background work and vet those candidates. Number four is talking about marketing. This one's fairly straightforward in the world that we live in now, but you want obviously broad exposure, so you want your job to be out there, not only on the search firm's website, but they also need to make sure that it's getting out there on common association websites such as your Superintendent's Association, United School Administrators. KSB frequently puts vacancies up for superintendent searches that we have no part of, but they're members, and so we do that. So make sure you're asking some questions around where are you posting this, where are those things placed? And then what's your market? And then what's your marketing strategy? In the world of social media now, it's very easy to do pushes and bumps and tweets and posts and get those things out there and keep them at the forefront of the vacancies that are out there. And when you look across the nation, there's a lot of superintendent searches out there. You want that group to be working to make sure yours is towards the top of the vacancies that are out there. Getting into number five, talks about helping you define a concise list of desired characteristics. This needs to be a step in the process that happens early on where they meet with stakeholders for your district, gather input, gather data for you, and then let you as a board really hone that down and define what are the most important characteristics that we as a board agree need to have in our next superintendent. And again, this needs to be done in an open, transparent manner. A lot of places will offer you an opportunity to do a public survey, which we think is a great way to get people, get input from folks, but then also do some face-to-face focus groups. You can really learn a lot when you're having to sit down face-to-face with those groups versus just reading responses online. So that needs to obviously be a key part of the process is, how are we going to gather input from folks that have a vested interest in our district? And then how are you going to work with us as a Board of Education to make sure that those characteristics that you're looking for in candidates are aligned with what we actually want? We feel that that's an important step in the vetting process is that they use those characteristics that you all have defined and look into the background, the experiences that the candidates bring and see where there's good fit or a good match with some of those candidates. So, talking kind of fast, any questions as I go through these?
I had one about the focus groups. So when we went through this process last time, the search firm we used didn't want board members to be part of those groups. They wanted to do them themselves and then have us kind of read the responses. Is that typically how it's done?
Yes. And in fact, most of the time, it's, they want the board members to be removed from those focus groups. I would assume their argument is, when there's a board member sitting in there, it could potentially sway and close down some of the conversation. And you want all of that information and so, and you want it unfiltered and unbiased. So when they bring that to you, you're not sitting there saying, well, yeah, I was in that focus group and here's why that was mentioned.
Okay.
You want it to really be a clean look at that information so you can say, well, that aligns with what we're thinking or, wow, there's a whole pattern that emerged here that I wasn't aware of as they went through the focus groups. Any other questions? So number six down there, disclosing of established methods. So some key questions should be asked about how candidates are vetted for their experience and characteristics that fit our district. And what you would want to hear is that we do background work, we make contacts with places of previous employment, but then we also check references that are what we would call the tertiary or secondary references that aren't necessarily listed right there on their resume or on their application. But you want to hear them talk about, we continue to dig deeper and deeper with each of these candidates based on professional networks that we access, based on professional relationships that have been established with people in the field. Make sure you're asking some questions about that again. In some cases, if it's a firm that works on behalf of the candidate, once the candidate gets into the pool, there's really no more vetting that happens. And sometimes there's some things that need to continue to be discovered in that process of vetting candidates. So obviously, you want them to disclose those findings when they present the candidates. That all is done in an executive session typically, but you want them to talk about, here's what we found and we kind of call it the good, the bad, and the ugly. You know, what's the great things that fit with what we need? What are the things that are maybe questionable that we came up with in our background research? And probably one of the bigger things in the last several years is, what's their digital presence? You know, how do they present themselves on a digital platform? And so you'll want to ask some questions around, well, how do you vet candidates digitally? You know, are you looking into their different digital online accounts, what was out there? So you should expect some of those things to come out in the sharing of candidates that have applied for your position.
I have a question. Are there characteristics or things that would tip you off that the candidates are in-house, you know, pool candidates, like you had mentioned, versus outside candidates in how they vet them? Or like, is there a tell when we ask them?
Honestly, one of the simplest ways to do that is research your firms and you'll start to see patterns where, wow, there's the same five people in all the searches that they do in districts this size all over the nation. You know, and that to us is kind of a signal that, hey, maybe they're just trying to place people in those most desirable positions. Our experience in working with other school board associations across the United States is, you have best, you know, best results with longevity and performance if the person is actually pursuing your position versus just being put into that position and waiting on the next step up the ladder. So some simple research on the firms and just looking at their most recent searches and kind of seeing what their finalist pool looks like, if it's the same group of 10 to 12 people, that's kind of a tell that you might want to dig into a little bit more.
Is there an association you can check with or anything, like an association of search firms?
Well, that's, the school board associations across the United States all have people that do what we do. And there's a, the North Carolina School Board Association, they actually have people on staff that kind of monitor what's the trends and patterns out there with superintendent searches. And so if you're kind of getting a vibe, a simple call to us and we can kind of check some of that out. If there's some group that you're seeing, this looks a little bit off, we'll definitely dig into that for you.
So what do you recommend in terms of board, the board checking references for the firms before we do the interviews next week?
Either way, check references. I don't know that that's necessarily required beforehand, but at some point, either before you start interviews or before you make your final decision, I would definitely encourage you to call some districts that have used them in the last year or two. And again, if you run into a roadblock on that, we can call around as well on your behalf because we serve your Board of Education if there's anything out there that's a concern. Frankly, if you do a simple internet search, you can find where they've searched it and do a little bit of research that way and that'll point you to some districts that you may want to call for some additional information.
I was just curious whether you think it's better to do the reference checks ahead of the interviews for all the firms or to...
Just be consistent, I think, because you'll find, you can dig deep enough and find a situation with anybody that's doing a search. And so I would encourage you, whatever you do, be consistent with, if you're going to do it for one, do it for all. Be consistent with that because you can dig around and find a situation or a story on every group that's ever done a superintendent search that the information that's, it's out there on the web and it's out there forever. So just be consistent when you do that.
Okay. Thank you.
Anything else? Another key question or key area to ask some questions about when you go through this process is guidance and support that they will offer through the interview process. That's an area during the hiring process where districts can get themselves into some hot water very quickly if they haven't put some thought and attention to detail into their interview questions. So you guys are lucky to have an attorney on staff that's very capable of helping with that as well. But the search firm should also be willing to help you with making sure that the questions being asked are legal and ethical and above the board. They should also be able to provide you guidance into example schedules of what the interview day looked like, what are examples of things that districts do to make sure that folks get a chance to see who these candidates are when they come to town for their interview. They should be able to provide examples and ideas on how that should be crafted. But again, you as a board should decide how you want to do that. But the firm should be willing to share some of those insights and ideas of what's worked in similar types of situations or similar districts to yours. And then over on the backside, one of the key things that you need to ask about during the vetting process is, who ultimately owns the applications as this search lays out? Those applications, you want to possess those applications at the end of the search process, the reasoning and rationale behind that. It's your position and that's an indicator that we're operating in good faith. It's your search, we're trying to be upfront with everybody that's applied. This one is kind of right in line with another, number 10 down here that, excuse me, I guess it's on number eight there. You want to see all the applicants that have applied. What we would encourage you to ask about is, okay, so do we have an opportunity to see everybody that's applied? And then how will you help us, you know, prioritize or determine which candidates out of that applicant pool are a best fit? You know, we would hope that we're using a search firm that gives you those applications at the end of the search process because ultimately, it's your search and you're paying them to do that search for you. So they're a contracted service, obviously, for your Board of Education. Number nine, this one, there's been some things recently, not so far from home here, obviously not in Lawrence, but in the Midwest. What's a thorough background search look like? What's the background check process look like? You know, at a minimum, a background check should include state and federal crime, social security number verification, outstanding warrants and charges. But they can take that a step further, obviously, and this one kind of goes with that vetting on the front side that I talked about also. You want them to have done their homework on these candidates and they need to do that every time these candidates apply or within a certain timeframe. If they've done that six months to two years ago on a candidate, a lot can change in that period of time. So some questions around how frequently are background checks conducted on these candidates and what types of things are looked for in these background checks is an important question for you to consider as you look at your firm.
Real quick, and above and beyond what you've listed here, is there, is there best practices, a list of characteristics that they should be checking?
These are, like I said, at a minimum, there's some other schools of thought out there and this doesn't happen a lot in Kansas, but there's some other schools of thought out there around, I'm drawing a blank on the words I'm looking for right now. In a recent conversation with other school board associations, they've started doing a financial background check as the person ever filed for bankruptcy. This person's operating a several million dollar budget for you. There's a caveat to that and David will be able to walk you through that better than I can, but that can only come to you as a Board of Education. And so there's some steps that if you're going to go down that path and do a background check on their financial side, you know, they should be willing to help you do that if you want to do that. But there's some very specific things that you need to make sure you're doing so that that doesn't get out there publicly because that needs to stay private and confidential, obviously. But these are the things that, from a criminal standpoint, are a must. When I get down there to the number 10, that's the next big one that you want to make sure that they're doing some checks on. Can they get a license in Kansas by the July 1 date that they're going to take the position? You can read about stories all the time where a district thinks they've got the right fit and then the candidate is not able to get a license in state due to not having educational experiences that Kansas expects. Kansas has a pretty high standard for securing a superintendent's license. And so the search firm should be working with the candidates to see, okay, what's the likelihood that your out-of-state license transfers to Kansas? We need written verification from the State Department that that's going to transfer. The search firm should be disclosing that at the time of presentation of the candidates that, hey, this person's coming from this state. It's very unlikely that they're going to even be an option because of their license situation in their state that they can get a Kansas license. That saves you time, that saves your emotional roller coaster of, hey, you think you've got somebody, but they can't get a license in Kansas. So making sure that you're asking, you know, will every candidate brought to us have the capability of getting a Kansas license by July 1 or do they have a Kansas license is an important question to ask the search firm because you'll get some people that will apply, that they may have a longer period of time that's required for them to get their license. And the state will work with some folks, but you need to have that mapped out before you extend that offer. Number 11 is kind of after the hire has been made, what's the support for the Board of Education look like as that new executive transitions into the position? You want that to be an ongoing relationship between the firm and the new superintendent and the board to get you off on the right foot. You want to be on the same page starting off so expectations are consistent. You've got some processes of communication that you've talked about as a team. It's a whole lot easier to do that with an outside person coming in and facilitating that than having the new superintendent sit at the table and say, you know, here's what I expect and because you guys, you're still trying to figure each other out. So asking about what type of supports offered for the transition with the new superintendent to working with the board is also another area you'll want to spend some time talking about with the search firm. And then kind of the last piece here to ask some questions about is guarantees from the firm. If they've done their work and done their homework and really looked at these candidates and looked at your needs, they should be able to bring you candidates that are a good fit. So they should be willing to stand behind that through some sort of a guarantee that would allow you in the event, you wouldn't want it to happen, but if it didn't go well, you want them to come back and continue to work with you in a manner that gets the right person in place for you as a Board of Education. So what questions do these considerations raise for you guys?
I'm really interested in the number eight, the sharing of materials. I think some of the firms use like an online application.
I would say most of them do now.
Most of them do?
Yeah. You should still expect them to put together profiles of each of the candidates as their full application, online submitted materials. I think that's a basic expectation you should have. Again, it's about them working for you and you want to have those materials. That gives a show of confidence that they're really here for you and not just trying to move people to positions that they think they can move people to.
And then in regard to the background checks, when you mentioned recent, the obvious one that came to mind was the issue of credentials.
Yes.
And so what's a typical, what is typical for search firms in terms of checking the academic credentials of an individual versus the criminal background check?
Sure. So typically, what you would see is, they would have to submit official transcripts from universities and that, you know, official transcript from the university is official. And so, you know, red flags can be raised when there's a pattern that emerges in a transcript that isn't consistent or it's coming from a university that there's some questions about. You know, when that happens with us, it's a simple call to university registrar's office. They all have a catalog that says these are accredited universities, or that person or that university is not an accredited university, I shouldn't say person, that university is not an accredited university. Some simple research names come up that don't look familiar with a university, some simple research and digging in, where is that at? Are they accredited? Do they even have the program that's listed there on that person's undergraduate degree or master's degree? That's typically how firms go through that vetting process. There's some other, there's some other background companies that some search firms have started to use and it's quite costly, but they've also started using those at the last stage, you get down to two or three candidates and they'll pay the additional cost to have a full credential review done by one of these third parties. So that's another option that some search firms have started using because they go and dig deep into the credentials and transcripts and all of those things on the behalf of the school board.
Other questions?
You've done such a great job of educating us.
Well, what I would encourage you guys to do kind of for your next step is each of you take a moment tonight or after the meeting and identify what are the two or three most important considerations for me personally, you know? And that's going to give you some insights into who's the best fit for our search firm. Because if you all have agreement that it's about all the application materials being ours, that's going to be something you really need to dig into and ask some questions about during this interview process. Or if it's about concerns over credentialing and that's a common concern among all of you as board members, that's something that you really need to dig into and get comfortable with the firm that you're talking to going through the process. So I'd encourage you tonight to take a moment and just reflect, what are my top two or three personal considerations off of this list that are most important? Or maybe I left something off that's the most important for you. But take a moment and kind of talk about what those most important considerations are for you personally and see where the rest of the board is around those. And that'll help you kind of craft your direction as you go through the interview process with those search firms. Okay? Any final questions?
Great. I think if you want to sit down, we'll have a discussion and you can stay for a little bit longer in case more questions come up.
I'm going to hang.
That'd be great. All right. Thank you. Okay, so I think we probably just need to have a general discussion about how we want to approach the interviews and whether we want to each have our own individual questions that we want to ask or if we want to try to have...
that we want to ask or if we want to try to have, you know, a set of questions that we ask every firm, what people's preferences are about that. And I think the other issue, based on Brian's presentation, that we do need to decide about tonight is whether, how we want to do the reference checks for the search firms. Do we want to do them ahead of time so that we have that information available to discuss after the interviews are concluded on Monday? And if so, does the board want board leadership to do those reference checks? Do we want to divide them up amongst board members? How would we like to approach that?
I think we definitely need to do them beforehand.
I think that's my gut feeling as well. Everybody's shaking heads, yeah, okay. All right. Unless board members have a burning desire to make a number of phone calls.
I trust you to do it.
We can, Jessica and I can work together and figure that out.
I mean, I do think if in that process there are red flags, I mean, if you call the references and all of them are like, it was terrible, I would never use this firm again, then we should uninvite them potentially from the interview process. So I mean, obviously if there are some major red flags, that might change our interview.
Okay. Other thoughts about that? Well, what do you think about the questions and how we approach the interview?
I like the pool. I mean, that we did kind of with the interim, just kind of have maybe a couple of them and then we just put them together.
Do we have our list from last time? Did you keep that? I probably have it somewhere, like on my computer, but because we've done this before, not that long ago. And so I think we have our previous questions because we did interview the search firms. And I think we did the same questions for each one. I think that makes sense.
Yeah.
I mean, I do think incorporating some of this information we didn't consider last time. And I am pretty interested in having the same consultant throughout. I do think we got quite a few sales teams last time around and it would have been nice to know that those were not the people that were actually coming through the work.
And I believe that we have asked, David, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but we have asked the search firms that when they come on Monday, they need to bring the team who will actually be working with us to the interview so that we have an opportunity to meet them.
Oh, great, yeah, that's awesome.
But I think that it's still important to ask that question during the interview as well, just to make sure they understand how important that is.
Well, and to know, I mean, even if they bring the whole team, it's possible that they've divided it up, right? So there's a few people that are only involved at the very beginning and then they back off. So let's just get an idea of how they have, how they structure it.
How they propose to staff it, sure. Are there other things that jump out from the list that Brian shared that are priorities for board members?
I think, oh, sorry. Go ahead. You might say the same thing. I think the, whether they, looking at the candidates that they're suggesting and if it's like that across the.
A pool versus unique candidates for the board, okay.
Yeah, I want to know how, have them really lay out how they plan to engage the community and all the key stakeholders, basically, what that process looks like and then how that information is presented to us.
And how, I mean, because we are doing, are we, I mean, I think we're doing like a patron insight survey to collect some data that would help kind of inform a larger picture before we do kind of focus groups. So how they can help utilize that data in order to make our focus group information more rich for us to use in the process? I mean, I assume that they've worked with districts who've done just district-wide surveys before and so maybe hear about some of those experiences and incorporating that into this characteristic list. And then the vetting, social media background, I think that's critical.
And what their criteria that they use.
Right, so so far as priorities have got, their community engagement plan, how the consultant team will staff the search and will we work with the same people, vetting, closely vetting the social media and learning about how they plan to do that. How would they use data we provide to them to inform the focus groups? And there was one other thing.
Pool.
The pool, thank you.
It's like internal work for us and not for the candidates.
Right, and I was trying to find.
I'm just listening.
Yeah.
Some things to consider. Back, you guys were talking about the interview questions. I would highly recommend you have a set of questions that you ask each firm and each person asks the same question or one person asks the same, all the questions. So you go around and, because that way you're consistent in how you frame those. The other thing, when you're talking about surveys, use the search firm. They're going to have survey capability and survey tools to use and those questions are probably going to be more pinpointed towards superintendent leadership and district leadership. So use the firm to do that for you. And they should be able to articulate to you how to meld the online pieces with the focus groups onsite or face-to-face. But definitely use them as, I mean, that should be an expectation that they have that capability.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Okay, then, so each board member asking a question versus having, I guess it would be me, asking all the questions and then board members asking follow-ups. Strong preferences one way or the other about structuring it?
I think it'd keep us more engaged if we.
Each have a question?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so then what I will try to do then is take this information and come up with a list of a question for each of us to ask that hits on these priorities plus some of the other things that are on the list that Brian provided and get that sent out to everybody by the end of the week to review and.
I'll try and find our old list because I'm sure I have it somewhere in a folder on my computer.
Yeah, I know I don't have any of that material, so if you do and could share that.
Board president at the time, so I'm sure I can find it in my email or somewhere on my computer.
Okay.
And I'll get that to you so that if any of those are helpful, you can use those as well.
All right. Then is that, are we in agreement with that plan? And then we'll provide those questions ahead of time while just number one through seven and we'll, and then we have talked about having about 20 minutes for their presentation and then allowing time, you know, probably 10 minutes or less, but more if it really, if we really need it for questions, board member questions afterwards.
Yeah, I have one more question for you. And it just has to do with timelines. So because the infinite wisdom of the legislature changed the terms, Marcel and I got a free bonus six months on our term. I know, isn't that amazing? My thank you letter has not been sent yet, but it will be. But because of that and because of the timing, we have new board members, two at minimum that will be elected in November, take their seat in January. Most of the timelines have this decision being made in February.
Late January or early February.
Based upon just the timeline of best practices of all three of these firms. I mean, it's a little different. But so how are we going to do this? How are we going to hop off the horse and put someone new on midway through the race and make this work? Given that, you know, a lot of this happens in executive session, interviews, the.
You're right.
Signing of the questions. And so what would you recommend as an association? I mean, I know you guys.
Yeah, it's, that's the districts that are in similar situations to you guys right now, they're pondering, do we push and try to wrap this thing up by January 1st? Because then we get to do it with the board that we've had. Or do we stretch this thing out and go into potentially March and get the new board members on and then do the search? You guys are pretty early. You should be able to push that, I would think, and try to get it done before January. I think you're opening yourself up for a whole lot of headache if you try to do this hiring. You're going to set the search up and then bring two or three new people on just to interview is basically what would be happening. They're not going to have been around for any of the designing of characteristics or qualities for candidates. And so they're going to maybe be in disagreement with what those priorities are. They're not going to know the background of why those priorities were selected. I know that's a short timeline, but I really think it's going to create a lot of headaches to try to do hiring in January with three new board members or however many new board members you're going to have. The option is to stretch that thing out.
Would it be okay or possible to kind of include them intentionally in the focus groups or no?
You can include them intentionally in the focus groups. I would not recommend you include them anything done in executive session because they're not going to be bound by any confidentiality requirements until they take the oath and take the seat as a board member. But you could put them in a focus group, yes, if you wanted to stick to that January, February timeline.
Are any boards considering having members resign early in order to swear in new members? Is that something that's done?
There is a situation that has happened where the person is running unopposed and there's a vacancy already on the board and that, and that district is going to do an appointment and then the person's going to go through the election. That's the only situation that I'm aware of where something like that's happened. I have not heard anybody do the resignation though, just for the purpose of appointing somebody.
Okay.
And I can say, I mean, because I've thought about that, you've said that a couple times and I've kind of molded over. I don't really think that's fair for us to do because we're really taking that away from then the public to elect who they want on the board.
Well, but keep in mind, the election's in November. They'll have the opportunity. The public will say, these are the people we want for the seat.
So you're saying you resign and they would come in.
Until January when they actually sit here. And so.
So you would, you would say resign after they were elected.
Resign after the election, then they just take their seat early. And I'm not trying to get out of it. I'm happy to stay on and see the process through if that is the best option. You know, I'm interested in hearing more from the community about it and I'm somewhat surprised that we haven't at all. Because there may be members that really want the fresh eyes, the newly elected, we chose these people as our leaders on this board to make the decision instead of Marcel and I.
On the other hand, you know, obviously we get to design the process that we use to replace a board member when there is a vacancy. And the process that we would be using to do that would be entirely, would look very, very different than what we've used in the past, for very good reason, in my opinion. But as with many things, sometimes when you think you're, this is the reaction you're going to get for doing it one way, you may get an opposite reaction from people who, I know, you know, from people who say, okay, well, you know, this is kind of a, I don't know. I just, I think there could be some potential pitfalls to doing it that we should think about.
I do think as the forums kind of heat up around, or just become more frequent, especially with the Voter Education Coalition, that this should be one of the issues that's discussed. I would like to hear from the candidates what they think. And, I mean, I do think it is a lot to ask of a newly elected board member, like less than a month into service, to make a choice, the significant.
And I think that there is, I think there is a lot to be said, and I don't want, I don't want either one of you to shortchange the incredible value that having been on the board for a longer period of time brings, just in the knowledge and experience that you have in terms of being able to evaluate what the district needs and what we're looking for. And that's something that we would lose a big chunk of. Vanessa, you being, especially being the longest-serving board member on the board and having worked with our former superintendent in his first year, you know, that's an experience that none of us have going back that far. And so that can't be replaced. And so I worry that taking yourself out of the equation early would actually be a negative in that way. And the same goes for Marcel, you know, having the experience that you've had on the board over the past several years, it's, you don't know what you don't know when you start in this position. And then there is a learning curve and it takes a while to really kind of learn all that and put it into a context that then, that you can then use to evaluate the decision-making that goes on. So just something to think about.
Right, you know, I did reach out to Dr. Dole because now he is serving in his capacity as the Kansas Superintendent's Leadership.
Kelly, Kansas Educational Leadership Institute.
Thank you. And just ask his opinion on this as well. And he did think that there would be value to the newly elected board members being involved in the hiring process, especially due to the fact that now, I mean, you know, the board members are essentially the bosses of the superintendent. And so having everyone involved in that process and, you know, happy about the outcome is an important component. And so I do think, I mean, I don't know, it's a challenging situation and one that I don't think the legislature fully thought out when they made this choice because we've been structuring superintendent hiring processes in such a way that this hasn't been an issue.
No, they clearly didn't think about it because, because there's still statutory deadlines and timeline. I just attended a training today at KSB on superintendent evaluation, which, you know, that all coincides with the hiring process in the fiscal year and when you bring on a new superintendent and when you're required to evaluate them during their first and second years, et cetera, et cetera. All of that is aligned to our fiscal year. None of it is aligned to the election cycle. So it, they didn't, I don't even know.
And assignments and just the way that we operate as an institution, it is much easier. I mean, there were reasons why spring elections were helpful for us.
Right. So here's a thought, is this, this particular topic about timing of the search in relation to having new board members joining the board, a question that we should ask the search firms for their, you know, what are your thoughts on this particular issue as part of the interview process?
Yeah, I think that's an important question to ask. I also, it's only been in the last, I've been doing this six years and it's been in honestly the last three years that searches have gotten earlier and earlier and earlier. And it's been driven by people announcing retirements. And so then what we want to get out there. And having done this for six years now, the districts, your size and type, you're going to get great candidates whether you close in February or whether you close in December. It's just how do you want to include these folks, the new board members coming in? Dr. Dole makes a great point. This person, whoever you're hiring, is going to be working for the group of seven people that will not include you and Marcel. So how do we, how do we honor that? How do we recognize that? Put that person at ease coming in to, hey, I know the seven people that are going to be supervising and evaluating me going forward. But we've only seen searches get started this early in the last couple of years because of, it's a shortage, obviously, but you guys are the size and type of district that you're going to draw candidates because of who you are. So I mean, there's a desire to get it done before the board change is over, but I don't think you'd be wise to mix it. So whatever you choose to do, either do it one way or do it the other, but don't do a mixed combination of the two. I think it's going to be a mess.
Okay.
That would be my guidance.
Okay.
That's helpful, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so I feel like I have a good sense of the game plan and what we need to have prepared for everybody by the end of the week and going into the weekend to review applications and do our interviews. Any other thoughts?
Monday, the 28th at 7, right?
That's correct. And I was, I actually forgot to mention at the beginning of the meeting, Rick sent his apologies. He had an unavoidable conflict tonight and that's why he's not here to participate in this, but as far as I know, he will be here on the 28th.
He teaches on Tuesday nights.
On Tuesday nights, right. So this is pretty unusual for Tuesday, having us having a Tuesday meeting like this, so. Okay, any other thoughts or concerns or questions on this topic? No? Okay, then I think we are all set and I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved, sorry.
Want to second that?
Give that one to Melissa, I'll second it.
All right, we've got, Melissa made the motion, Vanessa seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, meeting adjourned.